Great, looks like we're recording. So I want to welcome everybody today to our Zoom meeting with the candidates. I appreciate those candidates that are here today. So today in the Zoom meeting, we have folks from the, that are running for Budget Committee. We have Meg Brissette, Amber Capone, and Paul Grant. He's not here with us just yet, but maybe joining us shortly. And then in the plant, from the Planning Board, that's running for the Planning Board, we have three candidates. Gregory Estevez, Roger Montemblou, is that, did I pronounce that right?
Montblou.
Mountblou. Montblou. And Danielle Massey Quinn. So I want to welcome the candidates so much for joining us here on this Zoom platform. And what I want to do is I'm going to start, I think, with the Budget Committee candidates. And I'm just going to start and go down in alphabetical order. Kind of makes sense that way to me. So I'd like to first welcome Meg Brissette. Thank you so much for joining us here.
Thank you.
Yeah, and so, so for the folks that are watching later, each of the candidates are going to have an opportunity to speak. And then when they're done, we'll just move on to the next candidate. And then we'll have an opportunity for those members that are on the Zoom call, they can ask questions to any particular candidate or to all of them. Okay, all right, so Meg, why don't you lead, lead us off? You get lucky number one.
Yay, it's the only time I wish I had my maiden name still. A little further in the alphabet. It's Meg Brissette. I've lived in Pelham since 2010. We moved up here when my son was born. I went to Northeastern University in Boston. That's where I met my husband Troy, who's pretty active in the town himself. On, he's on school board and no, he also helps with the garden group in town. He's the president of that. At Northeastern, I served on the School Council Budget Committee. So that's where I started to get an interest in budgets. And then I went on to work as a paralegal in Boston until my son was born, moved up here. And then I started to substitute at the school, at Pelham Elementary, just to keep with my son's schedule. Three years ago is when I started with the Budget Committee. And there weren't enough people stepping up to help in that position. Even then, there weren't enough to fill the seats. So I was asked to serve and I was happy to do that. And I look to just keep going with the service because I feel like I can just learn a lot more and help with what I've learned in the last three years to keep going and help the town. And also just want to say that Amber Capone, who's also running for Budget, she has been an excellent addition to the Budget Committee. She came on three years ago as a writing candidate. And she has stepped in as Vice Chair and interim chair when our chairman couldn't be there. And she's been excellent addition to it. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you so much. I really, I appreciate you coming in again today to, to join us. And thank you so much. And thank you for running because I have to say it is, you know, it's difficult in these times, and especially with COVID, to step up and run for these committees and take on that responsibility. So I want to thank all of you for running for your, for your current committee that you're running for. So next, if Amber wants to, I don't mind, where are you Amber? You're here.
Hello.
Oh, there you are. Okay, hi Amber.
Hi.
If you want to go, go next, that would be great.
Yes, first I want to start off, thank you Sarah for having me here today. Thank you Meg for that nice introduction. I'll give you a little background about myself. My name is Amber Capone. I've lived in Pelham for about 10 years. I moved here while I was still in college. So I went Southern New Hampshire University. I currently have a master's degree in forensic accounting and fraud. Additionally, I am a certified internal auditor and I am a certified fraud examiner. So professionally, I work as a senior compliance auditor. And what all of that means is that I like to ask a lot, a lot of questions. I'm nosy and I like to ask a lot of questions. I'm not afraid to ask questions. I think that as I can learn a process or how something works, it gives an opportunity for everybody to put their input in and kind of give ideas on where to save money, how to utilize our funds, especially when we're talking about you folks. You guys are on a fixed income. I know this for a fact. My, my 85-year-old grandmother, I'm very close with her. It's on the forefront of my mind because it's on the forefront of her mind. Everything is going up but your paycheck. So where is that money going? Those are the questions that I like to ask and figure out where it's going. Of course, if you guys have any questions for me, you can always feel free to reach out to me. If I haven't thought of the question myself, I welcome your questions because I love when, when I'm not the only one asking questions. So again, if you have any questions, feel free to contact me any way you feel most comfortable with. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate that. And before I go on, I do want to, I did make an error earlier before we were recording. So I had mentioned, so there were three candidates for the Budget Committee. But there are three open spots, is that correct? Those people running for Budget Committee?
There are actually four candidates running right now.
Oh, there are four.
There are three spots.
There are three spots, okay.
And all for three-year terms.
Okay, great. So Budget Committee, you're voting for three of the four, there are four candidates running. There's a fourth candidate who is not here today. His name is Gregory Smith. And so you're getting an opportunity to meet three of them. So, or hopefully, I don't know, has Paul jumped in? So Paul isn't here. Paul Grant had emailed me and said that he was going to, something must have come up. If I do get information from Paul, I will send it along to our seniors afterwards. Similar to like what I'm going to be doing with Becky as well. I believe she, she had sent me some, she was hoping to come to want to this as well, but couldn't make it. So, okay, so now let's go on and let's meet those folks running for the Planning Board. And the Planning Board, their town is looking for two individuals for three years. And there are three candidates currently running for the Planning Board. And so why don't we start again in alphabetical order with Gregory Estevez? And if you want to let us know a little bit about yourself and your background, that would be great.
Well, first off, Sarah, thank you for having me and for the folks on today. Thank you very much. I'm Greg Estevez, as Sarah mentioned, and I'm running for the Planning Board. A little bit about myself, you know, I've been in Pelham my whole life. I graduated from Pelham High School back in the day. I guess I'm not that old yet, but nonetheless, 2003. You know, and following that, we talk about education. My education background, I have two master's degrees, a master's degree in public administration and a master's degree in business. And I also have a Doctor of Law and Policy degree, which should be complete around May of this year. Following my education, I went into the United States Army and had a great time as an armor officer, infantry officer. And then I became an intelligence officer. December 2015, I retired and I said, what do I do now? And I told my wife, you know, let's move back to the hometown of Pelham. I have three, I have three children, two daughters and, and a son. And that's exactly what I did. We moved back to Pelham where I grew up. I guess I, I am considered a townie when you think about it. But the reason why I did that is because I wanted to bring that, bring back my family to what I grew up with. And I want to give them the same opportunity. So fast forward to present, why would you ever want to get into politics? Well, Pelham gave me a lot, you know, and gave my family a lot while I was here. And, you know, I was informed by many folks within the community, local VFW, the American Legion. They said, Greg, you have some good qualities that we like you, possibly, you know, help out the town. And that's exactly why I'm running. I want to give a lot back to the town that's given myself, my family so much throughout the years. And, and I look forward to, you know, serving Pelham down for the next three years and for your vote. So like Amber mentioned, you know, I'm here to communicate. So if you have any questions, please let me know. I'm very accessible and look forward to the opportunity to speaking with you all later on today. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. I appreciate that. So, and then next we have Roger Montemblou. I'm gonna, I'm gonna butcher your name.
Yes.
Sorry, but people will now remember your name.
It's a, it's a, it's French Canadian. It's, uh, stands for Blue Mountain, so you can call me Montblou.
See now that I remember.
Okay. Incidentally, my video has been cutting out from the Zoom connection. I don't think it's my computer. I think it's the system that we're on, just in case I cut out during my, my introduction. First of all, Sarah, thank you very much for thinking of me to invite me to this affair. I really appreciate it. My background goes much like Greg's. I was a, I was in the, well, first of all, I.
The candidates.
Hello, can you hear me? I, you just cut out again. Sarah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right, so the video just cut out again. Anyway, I was a business major at the time at Lowell Technological Institute. I went on from there to the United States Navy. I went to the U.S. Naval Submarine School in New London, Connecticut. From there, I went out to the, my duty station on a submarine in the fleet. I completed my military duty and then got out and went into business. I was into business for over 40 years. I had between 25 and 30 employees in my, that worked for me, that raised children, paid mortgages and, you know, got their incomes from my business skills. The, I moved to Pelham after I got out of the Navy. And I've been in the town for over 50, just about 50 years now. I care about the town. This is my forever home. And the rural character of the town is one of my main interests in preserving here. I was chairman of the first master plan, which was 20 years ago. And that was one of the issues that went out to, on a survey to the public in Pelham. And the biggest response was that people wanted to keep the rural character of the town. So when I was on the master plan committee, I made certain that that got put into it. And we've been following that ever since. Can you still hear me? We got another cutout here.
Yep.
We can hear you too.
Fine, yeah.
Okay, so anyway, what I bring to the, the table for the Planning Board is that I have institutional knowledge and memory over a wide, broad experience on the board. I've been on, in the service of the town for almost 30 years on the Planning Board. I was on the Planning Board when we didn't even have a planning director or anybody to, to review our, our plans. It was kind of like the Wild West then. So I've seen a lot and I've done all my, all I can possibly do to preserve the rural character of this town. The exciting things that are coming up right now that I want to be able to continue on with is Pelham is contracted with National Regional Planning, a build-out analysis. It's a contract that, that's one of the building blocks when that's complete of our new master plan that we're going to put before the Budget Committee for funding shortly. And there's also a natural resource plan that the Conservation Commission has, has engaged in on the same type of contractual basis. And those two reports, those two summaries will give us, and when I say us, I'm talking about the new master plan committee that's going to be formed in the next year or so. In the next year. And it'll probably be complete in 2022. And it's about a year-long process, which includes many of the townspeople and many of board members and people that are interested, we welcome. And I would like to stay on as a planning board member in order to, to get the work done on that master plan rewrite. Sam Thomas is one of the Planning Board members who is going to head that up. We've already pared it down to three contractors that would be outside consultants. We're going to pick one of them. So I'm, I'm in, I'm in the swing of things right now and I would love to stay in that, right? You know, and be voted back on as, you know, to be reappointed or re-elected. And let's see, what else did I want to mention? I guess the, the only thing that I can relate to the, to the seniors in this particular format is that I'm one of them. I'm a senior. And I'm excited, I'm full of energy and I'd like to be able to be one of the people that the town can count on. I guess that's about wraps it up.
Great, well, thank you Roger. I appreciate that, a lot of experience. Thank you. And so the last person that's running for the place and the Planning Board is Danielle Massey Quinn. So welcome. Hi. And if you want to take it away and tell us a little bit about yourself.
You got it. First of all, thank you for having me. I appreciate that. My name is Danielle Massey Quinn. I am currently one of your elected officials on the Pelham Planning Board right now. My one-year term is coming to an end. And I'm here to respectfully ask for your vote for a full three-year seat. I am a 45-year lifelong resident of Pelham. Born and raised, I'm very proud of that. I live with my husband Dave, our son Devin, and our two beautiful daughters Brianna and Ariana. I was a paralegal for 10 years, two years in probate law and eight years working as a real estate paralegal. I was also a mortgage loan processor for three years. And I am currently an at-home mom now rescuing livestock animals. So my reasons to continue running for the Planning Board are to offer my conservative approach. I support one acre, one home zoning. I like to slow the growth of the new builds. I mean, if new builds are going to happen, then they need to be in line with the character of our town. I like to provide solutions for our existing water issues. It needs to be addressed, factored in when really considering some new, some new builds. I like to preserve our rural town by utilizing our current housing stock. I'm sorry, current housing and small commercial stock and to preserve our natural resources. I am not looking to modernize our town at all. Our town is a small rural and desired town and it needs to stay that way. I support farming, small family farming. And I will always advocate, advocate for livestock and property rights. And finally, the main and most important reason I want to continue to run for a three-year seat on the Pelham Planning Board is to continue working for the residents of Pelham. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I really appreciate all the candidates coming in and talking with our group today. You know, as kind of the moderator of this group, I am a town employee. But I do not live in Pelham, so I don't have any vested interest in any one or particular group or whatever. I just wanted to make sure everyone knew that I'm not a resident. I love this community. And had I not bought my house 30 years ago in the town that I am in now, I probably would have looked at Pelham because Pelham's beautiful. It's a great community and it's great people that live here and very community or, or organized and orientated. So, um, so in regards to, I'm going to, I'm going to bring us back to the Budget Committee. And the, the folks that we have here, the two, unfortunately, Paul still isn't here. So Meg and Amber are two committee member, candidates. And so I didn't know if there were anybody that had specific questions for either Meg or Amber or both regarding their running for a position on the Budget Committee. Budget Committee is a pretty tough, tough group and a pretty tough job. For those of you who, who may not know the hard work that the Budget Committee does. I, I work with our Budget Committee every year. The town departments have to bring their department budgets to the Board of Selectment and then they goes to, onto the Budget Committee. And they have, are tasked with looking over the budget for the town and making sure that money is being spent properly and in the way that the town would want it to go and that there isn't waste or things that maybe are being overlooked or underlooked. So it's, it's a tough job for, for those folks that take on the Budget Committee. It's, it's a lot of responsibility. Does anybody have any questions for either of the candidates? If you do, you can unmute yourself. Yvonne, I see your hand is up. Do you want to ask a question? You just need to unmute. There you are.
Recognize that due to COVID, there's been a lot of expenses for cities and towns and state. You anticipate increase in property tax because the state is going to charge towns more money?
Yeah, I don't know, can you ask, say that again Yvonne?
Why, I heard it. I can repeat it if you'd like and you can correct me if I'm wrong. You wanted to know with COVID and everything going on, obviously expenses have gone up. And if, if, if we can anticipate tax rates going up as a result, correct? Perfect. So as far as COVID goes, we were able to, as a town, to get a lot of money back from the CARES Act, which covered a lot of our expenses due to COVID. So I don't, specifically COVID-related, I don't foresee it impacting the tax. At least I, I didn't see it when I, we reviewed the budgets during 20, during 2020. For this upcoming year, I didn't see any impact. Obviously, that could change because we don't know how long realistically the pandemic could last. We all hope it would be over tomorrow, but that's not always the case. So if we do see more anticipated funds or more expenditures, we may see it happen, but we all, keep in mind, we also have a lot in our unassigned fund balance. So that would be something that we probably, as a Budget Committee, would discuss with Brian McCarthy, whether that was something we could do to help offset those costs.
Right, and also, sorry, and also the school I know and the town has been trying to get those funds from the state and federal level to make up for any shortfalls that they have to cover the PPE and such. And for every $2 million that we go up in our, in the budget, that's the dollar increase on the tax rate. Just to put those numbers out there.
Do you think the state government is going to be assessing cities and towns more money to make up for their budget deficit, for the state's budget deficit?
I haven't heard anything on that front, but Amber, correct me if I'm wrong. It hasn't come before us.
Yeah, it hasn't come, it hasn't reached our level if they are discussing it. Honestly, I don't know what Sununu is going to do. So it all depends, especially with their fiscal year coming due and them going through Budget Committee. It'll be really interesting to see what they do.
Good, all right. And while you guys were actually answering that question on, for Yvonne, I, Paul was able, Paul Grant, who is actually also one of the candidates for the Budget Committee, had been able to, he had a traffic jam today with his child. So I got a quick message, but are you able to talk, Paul, and tell us a little bit about yourself? Well.
Yes ma'am, can you hear me? Can you hear me ladies and gentlemen?
I can, yes, yes. Thank you for joining us and I appreciate you coming. I, obviously you've literally got your hands full. So thank you so much for joining us today. Just so you know, what I've, what I've done is I've had each of the candidates just kind of give a little bit of background, a little history about themselves, a little bit about their, maybe their education, their background, and then why they're interested in running for this committee that you're running for.
Yes ma'am, and first of all, ladies and gentlemen, I do apologize for being late, very bad form. I don't have a reason, my excuse is between a little kid today going to the, going to the doctor's appointment and tagging off and my wife was also working, I got jammed up, so I apologize. My name is Paul Grant. I'm running for, to represent you on our Budget Committee here in Pelham. I grew up in New Hampshire. I left in the late 90s for a career in the military, went to West Point and I was away for over 20 years. And I retired back to New Hampshire in 2019. My family chose Pelham because we wanted, again, this, this type of small-town milieu. It's what we wanted to do. And since coming back to Pelham, I've always wanted to get involved with helping the town. I do believe in volunteering, I do believe in service. That's, if you're part of a community, you should give something back to it. And so I thought that volunteering, the Budget Committee is a way to, to get involved with the town and learn how to, how things work and how to help my fellow citizens. That's, that's in a nutshell why I'm running to represent you. And overall, as far as my viewpoints, I, I believe that we should look at things very closely. I am a fiscal conservative in that just because something looks good and I think it's very popular. At the end of the day, no matter what we pay for or what we decide to pursue, we have to pay for it at some point. And my predecessors on the Budget Committee, I think they've done great work. I've never seen anything to find fault with or criticize. I just think that going on some of the questions we had the other night, a candidate tonight, things I would fix, I don't see any major issues right now. Things that I say, you know what, that's terrible, it's awful, we're hemorrhaging cash. I, I think the way for us to go forward is to ensure that what we do, as long as it meets the needs of the town, all of us residents, that we're doing it smart and that it's efficient and that we don't do things copy and paste from previously, but we take a critical eye, a critical look at everything we do. And that, that would be the way I'd approach things. But I do appreciate you all giving me this time today and I do apologize for being late. Won't happen again. I'll always make myself available if I was to get elected by you all for your input at any time.
Okay.
Thank you ma'am.
I really appreciate you coming. I know, and for all of the candidates, again, I know this is a challenge, especially during the day. You're working, you have obligations. So I really appreciate you taking the time to spend with us and our, our senior members here. So thank you. And does anyone else? So we were, we were kind of moving on to some questions for the Budget Committee. Are there any other questions from folks in regards to the candidates for the Budget Committee?
I have a question.
Sure.
First of all, thank you to all the candidates for joining us. I don't know if I'm on a line and asking for political affiliation from the candidates.
I have no idea.
I think you are, I'll answer first. So if you look me up on New Hampshire, I am always technically undecided. Personally, I like to say that I am fiscally Republican, socially Democrat. So depending on where the country is, it's always dependent where, like, what's more important at the time. So I historically will flip flop between Republican and Democrat only because there is no third middle party.
Thank you.
Did any, did either of the other Budget Committee want to chime in? You're welcome to.
I just want to say the seats for town, they are non-political. So that's why you don't see any affiliation when our names are on the ballot because town seats are not supposed to have any kind of political affiliation with them. I myself am an independent. I would say, I agree with being like Amber, we're more leaning Dem for social causes and Republican for being conservative with financial issues. But in all, I have never thought that way for a Budget Committee when we're reviewing budgets for the town. And I don't think it's really anything to do with it. Yeah, so that's, that's my answer for that one.
Thank you.
Sir, I'll, I am unabashedly conservative. I am not going to conceal it, but I do agree with Ms. Brissette that I do believe that, I know for voters, it's important. Everybody, I mean, where you stand, where you sit, not a doubt. As I've been, explained to me by mentors coming to this, we should be all political in our views when it comes to extending our duties for the town. But I myself, yes, I'm a conservative through and through.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any other questions for the Budget Committee? Candidates? I'm just going to look, I'm trying to see anybody have their hand up.
Um, if you don't mind ma'am, and again, if this was already covered before I came in late, you can all shut me off. I'm curious for the, for the attendees here, for the, for the, for the Zoom at the Senior Center, what matters to you? I'm running for Budget Committee, what's important to you? And if you already covered this, please disregard, I'll get the notes later from somebody.
No. No, we actually, nope. Are there, yeah, is there, is there somebody out there that would like to, Janet? Go ahead.
We were very happy when the Budget Committee approved getting Sarah a full-time assistant, because Sarah is grossly overworked. And I would like to ask you, will the Budget Committee of the future, and you folks, if you are on it, be open to considering more assistance for senior programs in Pelham? Because there are a lot of programs that could be happening, and at this time, senior programs are significantly underfunded.
Ladies, would you like to go first, or would you like me to go first?
Whoever spills.
Why don't we go with Meg, since she's, she's a B?
There I go again. I know the Senior Center runs a tight ship with their budget. They've I think it's one of the lower budgets, actually, for the town. We, we go line by line with all budgets to see what has been spent in the past, what's needed and what the future, what they look to do. And I know Sarah's done a great job in presenting that to the Budget Committee and telling us, you know, some of the things she wants to bring to it, to the Senior Center in the future. Want to keep things up to date. I know you guys have a lot of volunteers that help there, and sometimes you need some of that slack taken off the volunteers by having someone part-time. Or as in this case, I know up on the budget this year, it's to have the part-time assistant become a full-time employee. So as long as the town budget passes, that should occur. What else with the Senior Center? I know New Hampshire, I believe it's the second oldest state by age, so it is a growing concern, especially having younger people come in to make up for that older population. And so there, there is going to be in the next few years, a much, I think, greater need for services at the Senior Center.
That's true.
Yvonne, did you wanna?
Well, I just wanted to say that, you know, when we talk about the needs of seniors, which represent about thirty-five percent of the population of our town, we're not only talking about the Senior Center, we're talking about future needs. And things like affordable housing, rental property that are affordable for seniors, supports for people, a lot of people are believing caring for seniors at home. And those care supporters need support. I recognize that some of those things will have to be federally funded, maybe state-funded. But I think we have to make sure that our master plan, the new master plan coming up, accounts for the changes in the population in our town and the kinds of services and supports that are gonna be needed in the next ten years. So that's one of the reasons why the Council on Aging has recently put out a survey that is being implemented by the the Regional Planning, National Regional Planning Commission, because we hope to bring to the Budget Committee, to the Planning Committee for the Master Plan, what we believe are gonna be services and supports that are gonna be needed in the next, besides just a senior center. Because I think there's, there are a lot of other needs for seniors out there that we should be providing.
Yvonne, if you don't mind, I think I'll like to ask you a question, you know, and with myself being on the planning board and hopefully in the near future, and I get voted in by you folks. You know, I'm about strategic thinking, and you hit it right on, right on the head over there, you know. Every time that a town or city grows, you also have to make sure the support mechanisms also grow. Be it first responders, medical facilities, we'll say affordable housing for seniors. And that's one thing that, you know, when you look at the master plan, I know Roger did a great job last time and you know, it's really interesting that when you look at this, the growth of a town, you wanna have growth, but you want, you wanna make sure it's strategic growth. As Meg and Amber mentioned, you know, every time this town grows, guess what? That budget's gonna grow. You're gonna hire more police officers, more fire folks, et cetera, et cetera. So when you look at the planning aspect, and not to step on anybody's toes, but you gotta look at the strategic aspects, because every time a decision's made, there's a second, third order effect. The pros outweigh the cons, and and you gotta have a nice dialogue, a nice candid conversation with all the stakeholders, to include your team and and other folks throughout Pelham, to identify what's really needed for the town when it comes to strategic growth and to properly prepare for that ten years out for that master plan. That way, in the Budget Committee, in Meg's and Amber's corner, that they can plan accordingly and be fiscally responsible. So this is one, I jumped on that a little bit, Yvonne, but you make great, you make a great point.
Sure, I absolutely understand that. I think it needs to be an equitable allocation versus base on the composition of the community.
Yeah, and I, and I agree, you know, Yvonne and I, so Yvonne is the chairperson for the Elder Affairs Committee, and she works very closely with me here at the Senior Center, so she is extremely aware of the issues that are at hand when it comes to seniors and planning for the future, and we're very lucky to have her on the board. So, and she's been instrumental in getting that survey going for the national through the National Regional, Nashua Regional Planning Commission.
You got it.
Say that ten times, then.
Welcome to my world.
So yeah, so I mean, and that's important to bring to the Planning Committee, to bring, bring to the Planning Board, to bring to the Budget Committee, so that they have some real hard documented information about what the population is set up for.
May I add to that as well?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause sitting, sitting on the board right now, we actually got, we, you know, I'm volunteering to be part of updating the master plan as well. I know Roger mentioned it earlier. And that was one of our goals in doing so, was to, because the old master plan talks about a population of ten thousand. We're at fourteen, just over fourteen thousand. And I think it's very important that not only do we update it, but we factor in a lot of the support for the Senior Center, thinking long-term. That, that's very important with the growth of the town, absolutely. I also wanted to, you know, on the planning board side too, I think it's important to me for this, for the seniors as well, is to make, to see, you know, affordable housing for, oh, can you guys still see me? Affordable housing. We need, you know, I would like to see, you know, maybe some more housing come back for the seniors where it is affordable, where it is, where it does offer them a where it's, you know, sense of just a place where they can just settle down. So in reference to both, to these items, that's very important to me as well, being on the planning board. So that's just something I wanted to kinda let you all know.
Yeah.
Janet, if I could my answer from the budget side, I I think what you all wanna know, you and all, all the fellow members of the Senior Center is, as we expand the town and talk about building for the future and everything else, what about you? My answer to you, again, I don't know the answer, how to do it exactly, but philosophically, I think, and I said this the other night, just as we look to the future and how we're gonna take care of future families and residents through different mechanisms, I think it is critically important that we take care of you all. Again, you all were the past generations that built this town, you got us to where we're at, and we can't lose sight of you all. Again, I'm not gonna give you a false answer of what you wanna hear and say, yes, I would do it tomorrow, because I don't know how yet. However, as we start looking at proposals and everything else, I think we need to balance, again, future generations with our current generations, and that includes all of you. Because what this town is now is what you all paid taxes into for a lot longer than any of us on this call. And so it would be a priority to me to find a way to support that. Thank you.
I did wanna add also too, from the budget side. I think the reality, no, I know the reality is that we are not the only town whose senior population is expanding. As people age, by nature, our senior population is expanding. And one idea that I've discussed with Sarah before is, who can we, what senior geared companies can we team up with, maybe to sponsor events, so we can reallocate some of those funds, maybe to where we're, it's needed, like an assistant? Who can we reach out to and say, could you sponsor, could you sponsor a lunch or some activities for the week? And knowing that not all the money has to be raised through taxes, we can leverage what we can from companies who, on their benefit, they get to get their name out there.
Yeah, I'd just like to emphasize something that Yvonne said about proportionate spending, because the population of Pelham is at least twenty-five, thirty percent seniors. And as Meg mentioned, the Senior Center budget is the smallest in Pelham. So something there doesn't compute. So all you budget folks, I would like you to check the numbers and when you're thinking about these budgets.
We do have a growing, all across New Hampshire, the, but the senior population is growing quite rapidly. Back in the day, it, they started talking about what they were calling a silver tsunami that was hitting New Hampshire and the, in the United States as a whole, because our population is aging. And so we're starting to see that kinda getting up to the top of the crest. And so the, the, the thing that I would encourage, you know, Budget Committee members, Planning Board Committee members, if you get elected into those positions, is to come down to the Senior Center and talk to our seniors. You know, hopefully when COVID is done, we'll be able to have some open roundtable discussions, so that you can talk to folks firsthand, see some of the problems and concerns that, that maybe you're gonna hear about more with the completion of the senior needs assessment here in town, but really here firsthand from the people who live here. You know, we have a, an amazing diverse population that comes to our Senior Center from fifty all the way to a hundred and five. And so program planning, service planning for that demographic is very challenging, not just for a Senior Center, but for the town. And so I'm a, I'm a great resource. I've got years of experience working with the aging population and can certainly help, you know, Budget Committee and Planning Committees, you know, with, with questions or whatever. So feel free to always pull me in. So I wanna, I wanna kinda steer back to on other questions too, because I'm sure there are other questions that people may have for these candidates. I know we haven't really talked much to the planning candidates yet, the Plan, Planning Board candidates. Do folks have specific questions that they maybe wanted to ask the candidates running for the board? If you do, raise your hand so I can see you. Or if you are not visible, you can take yourself off mute and ask a question.
I do know one thing, Danielle and Roger and myself, we're not shy at all, so we look forward to speaking with you all.
I know my, I know the seniors are, you know, and when I'm speaking with folks, you know, there is that concern about and I, I'm not sure who it was, I think it might have been Paul mentioned. It might have even been, it might have even been you and Roger both talking about, you know, really keeping that rural character of the community, keeping that smaller-town feel that Pelham has. And when, when you're looking at Planning Board, what, what kind of things do you, for those people who are already on the Planning Board, what are the things that you grapple with the most? What is it? Is it new builds? Is it existing ordinances? What is it that you guys tackle that seems to be the most challenging? Maybe Roger, you might be able to answer that, because you've, you've been on the board for a bit.
Sarah, I have a question. When you're ready for it, might be related to ruralness.
Okay, let me, just here, I'd like to hear from Roger, just to kinda get a sense if you don't mind, and then I'll come back to you.
Absolutely.
Okay, I would have to say that as far as the development of the town going forward, that if we have balanced and responsible development, and we have, and I know a lot has been said today about a master plan. And so let me just give you a little more information. Back twenty years ago, when I chaired that first committee, I was pretty green at the time. We had a consultant, and it's, it's a, it's a pretty big undertaking. And now the, this is like, we're, we're in a perfect storm. That's why I'm really excited about staying on and working with this, with this master plan. Because right now, we have a census that has been taken, and when those numbers come out, that'll be extremely helpful to the committee and the people that are working on this, on this master plan committee, which will involve many groups in the town. And I can tell you from the first one that I was on, the town has used that footprint quite extensively over the years for protection in court cases, for development, for saying, for the Planning Board saying yea and nay on certain parts of developments and how they're going to go. It's, it's, it's an extremely important document. It's the bible of the town. So right now, like I said, because the census has been taken, and we're gonna have some really hard numbers to work with. And then, again, going back to the old, the twenty-year one, you know, since then, we've only band-aided it. And they're supposed to be updated completely about every ten years, so we are so far behind. But the one, fortunately, that we wrote was very, very useful to the town going forward. But like I heard earlier, we're now at fourteen thousand and growing. So things have changed substantially. I have seen it, believe me, over those, all those years. And it's time for a new one, and it's time for all the people. This town is really involved with keeping the rural character. That was the essential thing on the first plan. How do we do that? Well, that's what this next plan is gonna spell out. And the, the seniors have, you know, in the town, have grown in numbers. Again, I'm one of them. And, you know, we have big concerns for how this town is gonna remain with the rural charm that we all, you know, envisioned when we moved here. Again, I've been here fifty years, and I don't want to see that disappear. And I know none of the applicants here for Planning Board want to see that change. So we all share the same vision. And the, the master plan coming up will be a really important document, and the seniors will be able to be involved. And there, there should be a lot more written into this for the senior population in terms of, you know, future planning, protection, and, and as Danielle said, you know, affordable housing that they can transition into and stay in the town. And maybe their children can take, you know, the homes that they had, and affordable housing for them will give them the opportunity to stay with their family units. So as a Planning Board member now, and one hopefully in the future, that will be my goal, to do that. And again, my goal is also to work, you know, tirelessly on that master plan committee. And hopefully, you know, as my, as a Planning Board member. So, you know, they're gonna do a build-out analysis. That's one of the things that we contracted, which will be one of the building blocks. I mentioned it earlier, but that's gonna be a hugely important document to start the master plan with, with our consultant. It's gonna tell us, you know, in what direction the Planning Board should be looking after the analysis of the remaining land in our town and how it's gonna be developed. That'll be a great document for us. And another one, from the Conservation Commission, with Paul Gagden, will be the Natural Resource Plan. And those two plans will be, you know, major informational documents for the Master Plan Committee. So, you know, there's gonna be a lot of involvement, hopefully, with the seniors. There'll be a lot of involvement with, you know, other you know, citizens of the town. There'll be a lot of requests for information that go out, you know, surveys, and they'll all have to be boiled down to like, you know, what is the essential issues in each one? The committee will have to, you know, go through those. The, the consultant will guide everybody through, you know, and, and come in with national data, state data, regional data, town data. It's amazing how much is involved in it. So again, we're going back to balance. It's all about going forward, about So again, we're going back to balance. It's all about going forward, about balanced and responsible development. And with that, the hopes and dreams of the people that have been living here for years and years that are seniors, for people that moved here to raise their families, uh, the schools and all of that will all be based on this document that will be our footprint. So.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate that. I don't know, Joan, did you, you had?
My question is for a comment that Danielle made. She mentioned that she definitively likes one acre lots in Pelham, and I was wondering if she was against the concept that happened on Savannah Drive that there are one half acre lots, but one acre was allotted for each house. And now they have, um, the rest of the acreage is common land. Um, for them, the whole association on that street to, to use for their recreational purposes. So I'm wondering, are you against that too?
Um, I'm, I'm trying to think of what bill you're talking about. I don't know if I was in the board for that.
Not a bill of the building, when the bill, when the plan for Savannah Drive, which is off of Burns Road, came on the table, uh, the, the planning, it was presented two, two ways of going forth with the project. One was to have one acre lots per house.
Yep.
And the other plan was one half acre lots, but with that extra half acre per house being common land, because it was such that you could have common land. So now the whatever number of houses on the street have a substantial number of acreage in the back of their cul-de-sac that the whole neighborhood could enjoy. And they have their own little HOA and would, would make decisions on that. Are you like against something like that?
Um, I'm, I'm really just one acre, one household.
Okay.
Yeah.
From my perspective, one acre, uh, I mean, now that we're old, one acre of land to take care of. I'd love that hiking trails and just have a half acre to mow and everything, but, um, because you're still having seven houses, seven acres. You're just having one half acre lots. Um, of, if you, if you take a ride up there, you're gonna see it looks like big yards with nice landscaping. And so I don't understand what you'd have against the concept of now we kind of have like a piece of conservation land at the end of the cul-de-sac for all of the, the neighbors to enjoy.
I don't think I'm, 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 I'm against it. I just, I've never seen that kind of a bill. I'm, I really haven't. I didn't know that.
Okay. Are the other planning board members, were you on the board when this development happened?
I was not.
Because we live, we live, we are butters, so we went to all the meetings.
Absolutely. Yeah, I can honestly, I, I was not on the board at that time.
Okay. Because what I'm saying is that to make the statement definitively, I want one acre lots. And then people whose houses were built not with that concept and are enjoying the, the trails and everything that they have, um, might not vote for you. I mean, you know what I mean? If, um,
Well, I know the time.
So that was another, um, plan that went, uh, on, George, do you remember what year it was? My husband who went to the meetings with me, I guess not. Um, it was several years ago, but I thought, gee, that's a creative way to do it. Yeah, obviously the board went with that. The bill that presented two plans. Okay, I did, I thought it was very clever.
Yeah, I think it sounds clever, um, but where I've never seen a plan like that. I've only been on for the year, but I do know the town, the majority of the town is in favor of one house, one acre. And that's kind of how I was raised here in the town as well. Um, a lot of the nature trails I used to walk on don't exist because of the conservation subdivision developments. And I think because of how those looked at times too, the majority of town vote decided to vote that off as well. So, um, I will take a trip though, because it sounds interesting, but I'm not familiar with that plan. So, but that was a great question. So thank you.
Danielle, sorry, it's Meg. Um, does Article Two that's being proposed by the planning board on this current ballot, does that kind of go with that same idea she brought up? That it's that open space concept that it's more to get towards that conservation. It sort of sounds that way.
It does open the, it does offer the open space, um, and the acres are larger. They are three and three quarters of an acre, correct.
Yeah, okay. So it kind of gets to that where you have, you can still do a smaller acre, but it's not that you can jam more houses on, it can still have that open space.
No, I sat on that sub meeting as well, um, to, um, on the open space subdivision and Rod, Roger was the chair. And they made some changes. They got rid of like bonus lots on that. Um, they got rid of, um, they have, um, like fifty percent uplands on that now on that new open space subdivision that's on their article, the Warren Uncle now. And it's kind of is the key thing, the concept is what she is discussing. So thank you for bringing that up. Yeah, and it's on three quarters of, it's just under an acre land.
Danielle, I just wanted to add too, I'd be curious, not that I'm right for playing, but I'd be curious to know essentially the background to the one acre, one lot. So was the idea that we wouldn't overbuild?
Yes.
So, I mean, essentially if we're still allotting that, like if we're still allotting that one acre and they say you can't build on that conservation land, I'd be, so I, I wonder if that still fits, it still fits the general concept that we don't want to overbuild.
Exactly.
But
Yeah.
It creates more usable land for everybody.
But it does, yes. Yeah.
Can I jump, can I jump in?
Sure.
Okay, just, I'll just add a little bit. I won't take it, I won't take it over. Um, the, um, there on Article Two and or Article Four, uh, that we have a, a new proposal for the town that the planning board is, uh, voted in favor for. Uh, and as Danielle has mentioned, we've, uh, rewrote the original um, conservation subdivision. Uh, that no longer exists. That was thrown out about a year, a year and a half ago. And, um, so now what we have is what the planning board has come up with is what they call an open space concept, uh, subdivision. And what that does is preserve open land and it'll allow, uh, the homes to be, uh, slightly closer. Uh, it, it will eliminate what you would consider like a checkerboard build out where, you know, one acre homes, two hundred feet of frontage, and it's just cookie cutter all around the town. So with this new, uh, article, if you all, you know, hopefully vote for that, that would be great. Because this will allow the planning board and, uh, in conjunction with the conservation commission, uh, Paul, uh, Gaggen has worked for, with me and a lot of other people for, oh, hours and hours and hours, tons of hours on this new, um, proposal. And what, what it will do is preserve open land. It'll, uh, give us connectivity for walking trails, uh, snowmobile trails, uh, nature trails and, uh, open land for habitat for wildlife. Uh, because, you know, when you start building out cookie cutter and you keep pushing the wildlife away, um, they have nowhere to go. There's not, there's no, um, you know, consideration for what they need for food source habitat. You know, and, uh, to keep, you know, their species, you know, thriving. Um, so this new one, that's the planning board is, uh, put on to the, to the voters for, for March ninth. It's Article Two, uh, will, uh, hopefully bring back, you know, the open space concepts, uh, for preservation of land and water resources and habitat. It's, 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 it's a great remake. It's not, it's not what we had before. It's totally different. But it's, it's really gonna serve the purpose for what, what has been asked a few minutes ago.
Well, yeah, and I think it's, you know, having that, um, usable open space, the conservation land, the town forests are great for, um, all of the residents. I, I know our seniors here. We have a walking group that very much enjoys the trails. Uh, we've got a new snow shoeing group that's been going out that, uh, again, really it's, it's been great to have the ability to have those types of resources right here in your community uh, and not have to go outside of Pelham and have them. It, it's, it's a huge asset. Um, I know it's getting late. Um, we're a little bit past the hour. And I just wanted to ask our candidates, maybe, uh, if they had anything else that they wanted to add. Um, well, we can go back to our budget committee and just anybody running for the budget committee. If you did want to add anything final, um, that maybe you forgot or you wanted to make sure you're, the voters knew. Um, we, we could certainly have you do that. Amber, did you want to add?
Just wanted to add, I wrote this down because I really like your round table idea. Um, meet like if we did like something once a month, I have to check with Brian to see it, make sure that it's all right with right to know and stuff. But, um, if that was something that you guys are interested in, I wanted to add, um, not only do I want to hear complaints, but I also want to hear like any ideas you have. You, um, have probably solved more problems than I ever have. So I'm, I would love to know what ideas you have and, and maybe how you could solve it. And there are no stupid ideas, like everything like leads from something. So, um, definitely if you are interested in the round table, come to the round table, bring ideas, bring your complaints and we will work, work away at them.
Yeah, I think, I think it's a great to have that, you know, con, those conversations are so important and to hear directly from, um, folks, whether we do some in the evening or some at night. Um, I think it's a great way and, and to do brainstorming. Uh, these, these Zoom meetings for, for me, Amber, have been great. Um, I've been doing, since COVID, we've been doing these coffee and conversations and I have gotten some amazing ideas from these roundtables, just talking to people, hearing what they have to say, getting those ideas. And, and then, like you said, if you have a, it maybe as a, as being on the budget committee, once the budget committee is set, they could kind of meet throughout the year, um, with different groups, whether it be ju- just seniors, but also other groups. And really hear from the people in the, in the community. I think that would be ideal and I would definitely facilitate, you know, whether you did one a quarter or whatever, we could, we could work on that. I think that's an awesome way to get, um, feedback from folks.
I agree. Love it.
Did anybody else want to chime in? Um,
Meg, you have anything you'd like to say? I'll go, it's up to you. I'll go first or second.
Oh, sure. I'll jump in now. Um, just thanks again for having us. Um, it's been a pleasure. I, I like this kind of, uh, format. It's, it's been much, uh, uh, much more friendly in this kind of environment, doing this type of Zoom call and, uh, some other things. I just want to say, uh, like Amber said, I think that Round Robin would, that's a great idea. I mean, because sometimes when we're looking at the numbers, it's pretty sterile, what we're looking at. So to get ideas and to actually put faces to some of these projects when we're looking at numbers really does help. Um, you know, also on budget, we have to remember that anytime we're increasing any type of budget, it's also more likely to increase the tax on us. So it's, you know, some things that we really want. It's some things that we really need to do and it's also just balancing what we have coming up in that coming, uh, fiscal year for either the school or for the town or collective bargaining agreements that are coming up. Um, the town and school do a really good job of trying to offset each other, um, with what's coming up of each year. So we're not bombarded in one year with multiple contracts. So sometimes with ideas with the budget, we might want something right away and it might have to wait a year or two just because of other increases that are occurring. Um, and just, uh, one last thing, so we didn't talk about it was, um, school war Article Two for the memorial school project. That's the fifty-six-year-old building we're looking to renovate and add to. That's the, uh, big one. And I would say just from the budget perspective, the bond interest rates are so low right now that to keep putting off this project would probably be a detriment to our tax rate later on, just because this project isn't gonna get cheaper. As we learned from last year, it already went up. Um, I think about three percent, three and a half percent, we kept it from, about from increasing. But also just because the interest rate environment is so low right now, um, it'd be great if we could get that passed and we need sixty percent to vote for that project.
Yeah, we were, we were very lucky, Meg, to have Chip come in. Um, Chip McGee has spoken um, in our Zoom meetings and he's been fabulous telling us a lot, uh, about what's going on over there and, um, and it's, that's a great point because I know a lot of people are refinancing mortgages and you're not gonna get those rates any cheaper than we got them right now. So, yeah.
Right. Yeah, just looking at, um, thank you. I forgot. Yeah, Chip had reached out. That's wonderful. He's, he's been great for the community. Yeah, and we had, um, just this past, uh, January, the interest rate for the bond was one point five eight percent. The, uh, June or July prior, it was two point zero four percent. So the, what the school has put out is something they average like two point five percent, just to be conservative on the numbers. But we're really hoping that it comes in more in that closer to that one, you know, one point. You can't promise anything, but we're hoping for something close to that, like one point eight, two percent or something.
That would be great.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Paul, did you want to, uh, finish our budget, uh?
Yes, ma'am. Ladies and gentlemen, again, thank you so much for, uh, these few minutes this afternoon. I, I meant what I said earlier. I, I would be very disingenuous if I told you, we're gonna get you everything you want, just to get your vote. But I do mean what I said about paying homage to all because, uh, you are the generations that built this town. Growing up, when I was in Atkinson, my mother was on the lot for the seniors committee when she was in the selectmen and the planning board. So I, I learned that at a young age. So I, I do mean it. If, if there's a way, we should support it because I would place equal weight on addressing your interests as well as interests to look at for families five, ten, twenty years down the road coming to Pelham. So that is important to me. So I, I do appreciate this. Look forward to coming by and talking to you. Last time I was there, I think was in, I think Sarah or Yvonne, who I dropped him off with, I came by with supplies back earlier in the year. Um, that's good, a drive-by visit, but a chance to come to you and to hear your concerns and your thoughts would be great because not everyone's as, as active on social media. I personally hate Facebook. I think it's a scourge of society, but nonetheless, it's useful. But I want to ensure that if I was elected, I'd find a way to hear from you just as often, just as easily, that makes it easy for you. So thank you again, ladies and gentlemen, for this time.
Thank you so much, Paul. And, and it's true, a, a lot of our seniors are not on social media. Um, I, it was a real learning curve when the pandemic hit to try to get, um, folks to learn how to use Zoom. And I give credit to, uh, uh, all of these folks who did some really fast, quick learning. Um, and we had some post sessions early on and it was, it was a little bit of a challenge, but they mastered it. I'm so proud of all of them. Um, or most of them. Some of them had it before me and some of them were better than me. Um, but, um, it, it's been a, it's been a learning curve with the social media and, um, uh, using Facebook more correctly, um, but I appreciate it. But that hands-on, that coming in and meeting with people and face-to-face, when we have that ability to really do that again, it's gonna be wonderful. I really would love to have, um, all, whether it be the planning board as well. Um, those folks that get elected and appointed and the, all the committees to come in to the senior center and have that opportunity to meet and talk to your constituents. So, um, so the planning board, let's, uh, let's hear from them before we leave. If, I don't know, if Gregory, would you like to, um, start us off with, uh, with your goodbyes, I guess?
It's not gonna be a goodbye because.
Uh, for now, the Zoom thing.
That sounds good. Well, well, first off, thank you all for, uh, having myself and the other candidates on today. Uh, as I mentioned, one thing I did forget, I am also a real estate agent too, in Massachusetts and New Hampshire. And, you know, when we talk about who the stakeholders are, you definitely have a voice. You know, the importance of having an honest dialogue and, and very early conversations with, with all stakeholders in Pelham is definitely a key for success. Uh, the open communication tends to result in better projects and also a fair outcome for all those involved. And, and that's important to, to understand in, in, in today's world, you know, currently COVID, the question is, how do we ensure that you have a voice? And I think Sarah and Yvonne, you know, I, I look forward to working with you folks going forward. Um, because you kind of just mentioned that, Sarah, that, uh, social media, uh, i- is still kind of new to some folks. And, and that's important that candidates like myself understand all your current problem sets. And I'm only one vote, but I can at least bring it to the board, articulate it and be a voice for Pelham. And, and I look forward to your support on March ninth. Until then, thank you again and I look forward to meeting you all in the future.
Thank you so much. Yeah, thank you. And Roger, do you want to go next? Hope you're unsilent.
That would be great. Thank. That would be great. Thank you. I just want to thank you, Sarah, for inviting me and for everybody's time to listen to what I had to say. I certainly hope I get, I have gained their votes and your votes for all the seniors. My ambition is to turn out a fabulous planning, I'm sorry, master plan for the years to come. So this reelection for me is a focus on establishing, you know, a segue for the future for Pelham to have a wonderful blueprint to go by. And that'll probably be my swan song to the town at that point, after all my service. But I'm, I'm excited. I'm, I'm energized and I would love their vote. And I would also love their vote for the open space subdivision, Article Two, which I think is one of the, you know, great new additions to our open land preservation of wildlife and all of that. So thank you for inviting me and I'll say goodbye.
Yeah, you're welcome. It was a pleasure. Thank you so much for joining us. And our last candidate we have today, Danielle, if you would like to close us out for the, for the afternoon.
Absolutely. First and foremost, thank you all. Thank you, Sarah, for having me. Thank you to all the candidates. And thank you to the community. And I'm just going to let you, Joan, know that I'm checking out Savannah Drive now. So I can, so I can give it a go and see what that wonderful area she's talking about. But with that said, you know, I do hope I earned your vote. And I'm, you know, I'm, I'm really hoping to get for the, for the three year term. And I was trying to volunteer a little bit of my time with the Hobbs Center and then COVID hit. So I know Yvonne and we've been going back and forth, but as a precaution, a health precaution, I decided to wait a little bit. And then when it's a little bit safer, yes, I will be more involved. Absolutely. So with that, I just want to thank you and, and thank the, the Hobbs residents and the candidates and the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, thank you to all of our candidates that came tonight, today, this afternoon. I really appreciate you taking the time out of your day to come and have this conversation with us. These conversations are incredibly important and I do feel like that this is something that we can continue to do even after COVID, whether we do them on the Zoom platform or a combination of both. Because I do feel that they really do help bring people together. So thanks again for your time. Good luck to all the candidates who, who, if I could vote, I would, but I can't. They don't let me. But you guys are awesome and thanks again. So I'm going to stop our recording.